School District. And let's see, since we're right out of the gate here. Oh, hi, Anna, you made it great. Right out of the gate here, we were alerted earlier today to the fact that there may be a conflict with a sports meeting tonight, which we try to avoid having things happen at the same time as school committee meetings. But in order to accommodate people who might be interested in the turf field discussion, I would entertain a motion to reorder our continued business to go first, the auditor's report. Second, the 2022-23 handbook updates by Trish and Joanne, and then move the turf field progress report to the end. The presenters for those things and people who need to be here for that have been notified. Is there a motion on the table to do so? I'll make the motion. And is there a second?
Second, no reason.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right, all in favor by roll call. Anna?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Jake?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So we'll reorder the agenda as discussed. Thank you. Let's see, public comment. I see we do have some members of the public here, or at least one, I think. So as a, oh, thank you. My glasses. As a reminder for public comment, according to our own policies in the MRF policy manual, the public participation at school committee meeting section, B E D H, we try to allow speakers approximately three minutes to present their material. If you have something longer than that, especially if in the written format, we recommend that you send it to the chair before or after the committee, excuse me, the meeting for the committee members to review and consider. Topics for discussion should be limited to those items listed on the agenda for this evening. Let's all conduct ourselves properly and keeping in mind that speakers may offer objective criticisms of the school operations and programs as concerned them. But in public session, the committee will not hear personal complaints of school personnel or any member of the school committee, community, excuse me. Under most circumstances, administrative channels are the proper means for disposition of legitimate complaints involving staff members. So with those items from our own policy in place, if you have any, a public comment to make, please put your name and address in the chat. While we are waiting for that to take place, if anyone is calling from the phone who would like to make a public comment, please state your name so we can hear you. Seeing none in the chat and hearing nobody on the phone, can we please then close the chat box and we will close the public comment section? Moving on to the chairman's report. That's me. So the chairman's report is just simply an opportunity for, for me to report back what we've been working on for the benefit of our committee, but also the benefit of our community who listens. So just as a general update, we've been, we had our annual workshop at the beginning of August where we were able to receive some training from Tracy Novak of M A S C, which was really helpful. We, Pam and I have been meeting to work on, on structuring the upcoming work for the year and discussing meeting efficiency. We also had an opportunity today to interview a candidate for the school committee secretary role, and that went very well. And we are hopeful to have a new secretary lined up for our September 6th meeting. And that's really it. We are just getting the school year underway. It's like the last meeting before we're actually in school and moving forward. And I'm looking forward to a positive year, working together with everyone. So with that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. We have no minutes to review this time, so the consent agenda will be accepting warrants for fiscal year 22 vouchers, 1074 through 1078, and fiscal year 23 vouchers, 1006 and 1008, noting that there is no 1007. I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda. Someone say that you made.
Second, Foster.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a vote in order of roll call here going down the list. Anna?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Jake?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And I'm a yes to consent agenda carries unanimously. Subcommittee reports, which are likely to be quite brief as we're just getting underway. Elementary facilities, Matt's going to report out.
Did you want me to do that now? Do you want to do that towards the end for the?
No, you just say what we said.
Pardon?
You just say that we met and it's on the agenda.
Oh, we met and it's on the agenda.
Great job. Finance Subcommittee, that's Anna and I, we have not met as a Subcommittee yet and therefore have no report. Policy Subcommittee, I believe you have not yet met either, is that correct? We'll be working on a schedule for meeting for both those subcommittees in the near weeks. And negotiation, Kate?
Yeah, negotiations are ongoing. They're moving smoothly. We met less frequently over the summer, but we'll be picking back up as soon as the school year does. Our next meeting is on Thursday.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And we are on to the superintendent's report. Pam?
Okay, my report's verbal tonight and in the spirit of everyone else's reports, very brief. If you were watching the news, you see that, you saw that DESI came out with two advisories within the past, feels like 24 hours, one on COVID protocols for the year, which my understanding is a reduction in requirements there. And also a revised MCAS competency determination score profile for the high school. Haven't had time to dig into those. We are aware of them. We're going to give them a look and we will have, anything that has to be reported out to families around COVID will go out in the back to school letter. But other than that, updates on both at the September 6th meeting. Wanted to provide one comment on the minutes. We're lucky enough to have recordings of all the sessions which are posted through 1623, and we are up to date, except for our workshop session on the second, which was, which wasn't recorded. Have been in contact with Gail, our recording secretary, who's also a recording secretary for several boards in town. And she is working through her backlog and working to produce draft minutes as quickly as possible from the spring. And we'll bring those forward as soon as we get them. And that will be one of the first points of discussion with the news, our recording secretary as part of the onboarding. We'll try to create a bridge between the two. So just wanted to make everyone aware that we, we know that there's a backlog. We're working with the person who is responsible for providing those minutes and we'll get to them as soon as possible. If there are any questions, we have a posted public record. Just one other comment, actually two, in preparation for the beginning of the school year, two really positive reports. Our facilities staff works full tilt throughout the summer to get the buildings cleaned and prepped and ready to go. And they've just been doing an amazing job and everything is really starting to pull together and will be ready for the opening of school. And another just commentary on a lot of, a lot of reporting in the news about teacher shortages. We have fared very well in our hiring over the summer. We're going to be onboarding between teachers and TAs around 30 people for the beginning of the year. I would say the TA search has been a little bit tougher than the teacher search, but we are faring quite well and better than a lot of our colleagues in other districts. So no worries on that front. We have contingency plans for all positions and we're going to be ready to go to open the year. And we're excited. The next couple of weeks, we start to see different groups pop up on campus. The seniors will be in getting parking passes tomorrow, student orientation, boot camp, new teacher orientation next week, and then our big kickoff for the two teacher PD days. So we're excited, we're ready to go and looking forward to seeing the first of the kids come back for athletics at the end of the month.
Great, thank you, Pam. Does any, do any school committee members have a question for Pam regarding that which she has reported out on at this time? Okay. I don't see any, so we will move on to our continued business. Frank Seridi is here. We will turn the time over to you for our auditor's report. Thank you for being here.
Well, thank you. My pleasure. Appreciate the opportunity to present the results of the audit to you. From a timing standpoint, we came out in late February, or late May, sorry, to complete our preliminary work, the audit. At that time, we're auditing things like the budget, testing transactions, reviewing internal controls, auditing the federal awards. We're basically trying to do as much as we can to get a head start on the year-end audit procedures, just to put us in as good a position as we can to try to get that wrapped up on a timely basis. The year-end audit was completed first week in November. And at that time, we're wrapping up any loose ends we might have had from our preliminary work, completing all of our year-end audit procedures and then working with your financial team to compile the financial statements and the audit reports that you have in front of you tonight. We have very good cooperation and assistance on the audit as we normally do. I'd like to thank the superintendent, Assistant Superintendent of Finance, Financial Data Analyst, the Treasurer, and the rest of the finance team for all the cooperation and assistance that we received. We really appreciate that. Get good timely answers to all of our questions. The information that we received was accurate. And from our standpoint, we thought the audit went very well. The one thing that did come up in our year-end field work was that the books weren't completely closed. There were some additional journal entries that needed to be recorded to finalize and close out the ledgers. And that's something that I know your financial team has been working towards, you know, over the past like number of years. And it's actually a comment that we had in the management letter a number of years ago related to the staffing that you have in the accounting office to assist with all the accounting roles, responsibilities, and functions. And that's something that you've looked at and you made some changes in the past. And from what we're seeing in other places and just in terms of staffing, the accounting office and the business office, we're seeing a little bit more support there. And really you have that person, your financial data analyst, which, you know, that position was also processing your payroll, which tends to be done by a payroll clerk in other school districts. And that kind of frees up the, the financial data analyst to be able to take on more of the accounting responsibilities for maintaining the general ledger. That person would then have oversight responsibilities over the person processing the payroll and processing your purchases, your payments for purchases. And hopefully that would help to be able to have a more timely, like in a more complete monthly close, year-end close. And so that was a recommendation that we had in the management letter. I'm kind of jumping ahead to the management letter because it just made sense, I think, to talk about it a little bit here. That we were recommending that you kind of revisit the staffing and the roles and responsibilities in the business office. And we were recommending that you consider hiring, you know, some kind of support for processing payroll and processing accounts payable. And from what I understand, that has been done. You've done some restructuring, able to get someone into that position, which I think bodes really well for the future, to be able to complete some of the other reporting too, not just the annual audit, but also the certification of your excess and deficiency and also the completion of your end of year report. And so those are all important things you need, you know, to have that information as timely as possible. And it's also good to get timely feedback on the audit. So that was kind of the goal of the recommendation. And like I said, it sounds like some changes have been made. So I'm really, you know, optimistic and looking forward to see, you know, what kind of results come out of that. I think there might be a little bit of a learning curve to get everybody up to speed on their new roles and responsibilities. But we're hoping by the time the 2023 year-end close is coming, that things have kind of stabilized and that things are hopefully a little bit more efficient in, in terms of closing the books. So I really wanted to just kind of give a little bit of an overview on that because that was probably the, the biggest recommendation that we had through the course of the audits. And then I just wanted to give you some financial highlights, which we normally do. Your general fund, fund balance totaled $2.8 million. Of that, 149,000 is reserved for debt service. And that's basically bond premiums that you have received in, in future years and they were related to debt exclusions and they have to be amortized over a number of years, life of the debt. You've got 552,000 that's committed for your capital stabilization. That's the balance in your capital stabilization fund. 44,000 is assigned for encumbrances of just year-end purchase orders that are open. And you had another 335,000 of excess and deficiency that was voted to fund the fiscal 2023 budget. That leaves you with 1.8 million of unassigned fund balance. And that's basically like the starting point for your excess and deficiency calculation. Your E and D was certified at 1.6 million. That was 38,000 under the 5% D O R limit, so you didn't have to return any funds to the member communities related to that. If you were over the 5%, you would have had to return any excess. As far as your operating results, operations resulted in a decrease of 410,000. You actually had planned a decrease of 350,000 and that was because you used 335,000 of excess and deficiency to balance the fiscal 2021 budget. And another 15,000 of that reserve for debt service got amortized. Your revenues were 166,000 more than budgeted. And your expenditures, encumbrances were 341,000 less than budgeted. So you turned back some funds in your appropriations. Your salaries were under budget by 44,000 and your non-salary expenditures were under budget by 239,000. Your school choice fund, your fund balance totaled 1.6 million at the end of the year. That was about 100,000 decrease, or sorry, increase over the prior year. You took in 366,000 of school choice tuition payments and you used 264,000 to fund health insurance and programs with other districts. And that money in the school choice fund is available for appropriation by the school committee or expended for, it's available for expenditure by the school committee without further appropriation, I should say. Other significant transactions, you issued 2.2 million of long-term debt. You had 44.1 million outstanding at the end of the year. Didn't have any short-term debt outstanding. Your other post-employment benefits liability increased by 117,000 and totaled 24 million at the end of the year. Discount rate that you're using for that is seven and a half percent. That's a fully funded rate. And the plan was 13.3% funded at the end of the year, which was a 4% increase in the funding level from the prior year. So you are making progress towards funding that liability. How that's going to look at the end of '22 with the, what's happened with the markets may not look as good, but it's a long-term investment horizon. So you really can't worry too much about what's happening over the short term in terms of those investments. You contributed another 550,000 to the trust in fiscal 2021. And that's a pretty significant contribution when you compare to other, what other school districts are doing. You've been one of the leaders, I think, with the school districts from the start in terms of funding this liability, which is great. And more school districts are jumping on board and starting to chip away at this as well. Your net pension liability increased by 160,000 and totaled 5.9 million. You're part of the Essex Regional Retirement System for that. And that basically covers anyone that's not eligible to be in the mass teachers retirement system. Essex Regional was about 16% funded. That's up from 55% in the prior year. And for comparative purposes, they're using a discount rate of 7.3%, slightly lower than what you were using for OPEB. So to summarize for the financial statement audit, we were able to issue an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. That's a clean opinion. It's the best you can get. And it means that your financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Based on your budgetary results, we'd say that you have a sound budget process and effective budgetary controls in place. The information that we received was accurate. No internal control deficiencies were noted during post of the audit. And as I mentioned before, all of our interactions were professional and courteous. That's really what I wanted to say about the financial statement audit. I can talk really quickly about the report on federal awards. And that's required for any entities that expend more than 750,000 of federal funds in a fiscal year. The school expended 1.7 million in FY '21. 229,000 of that relates to the child nutrition program, which was fully funded by the federal government in fiscal 2021. And so you had more federal funding in the last couple of years due to COVID and the additional funding that the government was putting towards child nutrition. You also expended 381,000 on special education grants, 711,000 related to the coronavirus relief fund program, and that included the school reopening and remote learning grants. And then you had another 326,000 for the education stabilization fund program. And that's basically the grants from DESI, the ESER grants, and another 53,000 on other education grants. But the results of our testing, we had to focus our testing on the coronavirus relief fund grant. And what we found was that we didn't find any instances of non-compliance with program requirements. So we were able to issue an unmodified opinion on compliance. No significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in internal controls and no current year findings or questioning costs. So that was another clean report, basically the best results that you could hope for on that report. And then the last report is the management letter. And as we already talked about, we did have a comment in there recommending that you reassess your organizational structure and roles and responsibilities in the business office. There were also five prior year comments in there. And there was really good progress on those. Four of those comments we considered to be resolved. One related to timeliness of actuarial information for OPEB. Another one was related to the framework for assessing and improving cyber security. There was a comment in there about written job descriptions and another comment about documenting internal controls related to federal grants in accordance with the COSO framework. And there was one comment that is still ongoing slash unresolved, and that relates to financial policies and procedures. And so we did have had a recommendation for the last few years in the management letter because we think that, you know, that's A, a best practice. And it also, you know, helps you to set benchmarks for your various fund balance levels like excess and deficiency, capital stabilization, OPEB funding. To have a policy for use of personal credit cards, purchase orders. It's just, you know, the rating agencies look favorably upon you having that. It, like I said, sets benchmarks for management so that they know what your goals and objectives are. And it also outlives the board too. When people change on the board or management changes, these policies and procedures stay in place until they're formally voted on to have a change for one reason or another. So we do think that that's a best practice and still recommend that. But I also wanted to mention the management letter is critical in nature, doesn't highlight the things that you do well, unfortunately. But it's important to know that there's nothing in here that's considered to be a significant deficiency or material weakness or anything that you should be concerned about. Our comments are more comments to just help you to try to improve. And that's really the, the point of them. So that's really my report. If anybody had any questions or comments.
Thank you, Frank. So give me one moment, Anna. Okay. So first of all, I think I'm certain I pronounced your last name wrong. Seridi?
Ah, that's correct.
Well, I had, no, I had not said it that way. Sorry. What I'd like to do first is invite Avi and Pam to offer any additional commentary. And then after that, I will invite members of the committee one at a time and by roll call, you know, I will call out the, the names to offer questions for Frank.
Just a, yeah, just a couple of quick comments. I'm, I'm very, you know, thankful Frank comes and they do a fantastic job. And it's always good for us to see kind of what the best practices are. So we really appreciate the inputs here, not only as a compliance check, but as a way of providing input to us of where we can go to get better. And we really are pleased that we were able to address some longstanding management letter issues. Other than that, I think my, for the new members on the board, if anyone is interested, we've had quite a long history with the audits. And I think we've really made a lot of progress in the last, you know, 10, 10 years to rectify some situations that had been not so positive for the district prior to that. That's ancient history now, but I think it is important as we measure our success and talk about continual progress to realize where we came from and what we were able to accomplish. So we're happy to provide any of the past audits, you know, going back 10, 20 years. If you're kind of interested to see the evolution of our financial situation from the organization of the district. And I think sometimes it's important to remember the district's only 20 years old. So the first 10 years was really learning, building the plane while learning to fly it. And I think we've kind of spent this last decade trying to refine some processes to be more efficient and more timely in our action. I'll turn it over to Avi because this really is a kind of report out on his domain.
I'll just keep it brief because I know we have a long agenda tonight. I just to say that I think from my perspective, when I started here, the management letter is really kind of our, one of our several visioning documents that we use to kind of figure out where we want to go from a strategic standpoint for operations. There's lots of strategy that we do on a budgetary basis with the school committee, but in terms of running the operations, we look to the critical feedback from the management letter. And I think when we started here about 10 years ago, a lot of the items that were in there were really around financial operations, day-to-day transactional work reconciliations. And there are even some situations where there were just some insufficient staffing and in the right places that really led to, I think even one year where there had been a material weakness. And all of that's kind of been in the past. So now we're really focusing more on smaller items, I would say, that are important, but not necessarily things that keep me awake at night, just to be frank about that, but things more about how to get from, you know, where we are to even better. And I think we've talked a lot about the organizational restructuring. We didn't have the financial data analyst position, so business manager used to do all the, and when I started for the first several years, I did all of the journal entries for payroll as an example. This past year, the last comment I'll make was very, probably the most difficult accounting year we had ever. You heard the number of, the size of the federal grants that we had, over a million and a half total dollars that tripped, that caused us to need the CIFA, that federal awards document. I'm glad we had the COSO framework in place. You guys may remember that we put that in place last year. Those are practices we've been using for several years now, but we made it a formal process. But there was a ton of accounting there, including a lot of things for those that went through the COVID process with us that were constantly changing. We started out getting very little funding and we continued to hear more and more as time went on about additional funding that had, that was good news. It didn't cover all of our COVID spending, but it did require us to kind of go back and do a lot of juggling where things were, were being reported, including some very last-minute news from FEMA where they reversed their zero-dollar grant to give us over 120,000 and some last-minute news from both of the two member towns who were generous to share some of their CARES dollars. And so those things were all things that impacted the close of the fiscal 21 grant that I don't expect to see happening in future years now that that's behind us. So it was surprisingly one of the more challenging accounting years we've had since I've been here. So I'm glad to put the COVID accounting phase behind us and I appreciate the auditor's support as we went through that. The good news is, I think everything we've done has, I think, proven out to be according to the, to the rules and regulations that it needs to be. So I'm glad to see that we got a good report card there and I'm looking forward to the coming year with the new org chart. I want to thank the school committee for supporting our restructuring, which I do think will have a major, major impact on how we do business. Because the one thing we don't have is time. It's just, it's a, we're a small organization running a 32 million dollar business and we're trying to do that lean and mean, but it, it's tough to do sometimes. So we're doing our best to keep chugging. Anyway, thank you to Frank and to everybody. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay, thank you. So I am going to open this up to the school committee. If anyone has questions about the audit or the audit reports at this time. I did see Anna's hand. Please go ahead.
I think overall, no comments on the overall, you know, the, what you presented Frank. And I think what I would be interested, just as a new finance committee member, maybe tell us a little bit about your firm. How many, what's the percentage of the client are, you know, like our schools and nonprofits versus for profit? Just so like we have an idea. So I, I have an idea of, you know, what kind of service your firm, your firm provides and also how many years you have been doing the audit for us.
So our firm, the primary focus of our firm is auditing state and local government. And so we audit quite a few cities and towns that also includes. And so we audit quite a few cities and towns that also includes schools within the cities and towns. And then we audit a good number of regional vocational chatter and even some collaboratives. I think we have over a hundred different audit clients. There's six partners within the firm. We all specialize and focus on government audits. And so that's the primary focus. We do audit some nonprofits, but usually they're, you know, related to the other government entities that we audit. And so just efficiency, it makes sense for us to do those audits as well because they're typically included within the reporting entity of the primary government. And so that's really who we are as like a firm and where our focus is. And then as far as how many years we've been auditing, is that the other question for the school district?
How many? Yeah, just this specific school district.
I'd have to take a look. I don't know that off the top of my head, but it's been a good number of years. I would say over ten years.
Okay. Thank you. I have other processes, questions, but I think that Teresa, you and I, we can discuss in a subcommittee.
Great. Yep, I agree. Thank you. I also have some in that way, and I'm reserving my, my questions for the end. Does anyone else have questions about the audit or the audit report?
I think it's closer to fifteen years, Frank, because I know we have documentation prior to Avi and I coming on board.
Jake, go ahead.
Thanks, Frank, for being here. On the policy recommendation in your management letter, is there a key reference set or an organization that, you know, provides a recommended set of policies that would be relevant for us to look at?
Yeah, I'd recommend looking at the Government Finance Officers Association, referred to as the GFOA. They have a lot of best practice documents up there, documentation and related, specifically related to financial policies. And then I believe DLR has some best practice documentation, too, on their website, the Mass Department of Revenue.
And you said we have appropriate budgetary controls in place. Would the policy speak to the budgetary controls that you're referring to? Or are those kind of two separate things in terms of how the budget is done in-house versus the policies that drive it?
Yeah, I think the controls would be separate from, you know, the actual budget process and, you know, how you want to budget. That would be more of like the financial side of it.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Jake. Does anyone else from the school committee have questions for Frank? I don't see anyone, so I will, I will just, oh, Pam, go ahead.
Just while we're all together and on the policies, because I know this is something Avi and I have discussed frequently. Frank, not to put you on the spot, and you don't have to answer, but do you see like the top three priority policies to be done? I think I have a sense that reserves should be top of list, but that may not be the most appropriate when it comes to accounting.
I think the reserves are a big one. That kind of has a big impact on how you budget and how you establish and maintain those reserves and what they can be used for. Kind of see that as the.
Just to add to that, when we had our, our, I mentioned this in the notes, but just for public comment, when we did our bonds for the memorial school project and had S and P rate our bonds, we got an upgrade to double A plus, which is one step below triple A. Mostly what is distinguishing us in triple A is just the bond rating of our member town, since that's where the primary funding source comes from. But the area of housekeeping, they said that they would like to see would be a policy on reserve usage. They also considered that the largest one. And I think when you just look at the way our revenue is structured for our operating budget, you know, having one-time funds in there, that's the exact type of thing that they would want us to have a, a more sustainable policy on and also a policy that might get us out of the year-to-year type of decision-making. So I think that that's the thing that putting my, how can I help our district to get to where we want to go? That's something I would love to see us adopt, and I know that's a big part of the conversations that we're talking about in the upcoming budget cycle with the structural deficit that's been growing and needing correction. So I think those things all come together very nicely and clearly. Any policy we would contemplate would have to think about where we want to go versus where we are today from my standpoint.
Thank you, Avi. I'm going to take my turn before circling back to a second round, Anna. So yeah, mine actually was regarding exactly what Pam just asked about. What, what policy do we need to prioritize here and getting in place? And I know we've had, this has come up in conversation about our, do we have a policy regarding our OPEB contribution? And, and, you know, how much we are willing to fund that when we don't have our operating budget funded in reserve usage in that way as well. So I, I am eager for us to move forward with some of that work also. But my, my comment primarily is noting, I, I love the manager's report. This is my third manager's report, and, and I just think it's a really interesting look at what's, what we can do moving forward. And even in just, you know, just since I've been serving, there's been great progress on things that had been carried on for, for quite some time in this report. So I just want to make sure I'm reading this right. There was one additional new recommendation, but that's already been met. That was the, the payroll position. That's already been met. And then the carryforward comments have all been met with the exception of that policy work that we need to do. So am I, I'm reading this right? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure. That's, that's great, especially given what we've had on our plate. And so thanks to Pam and Avi and to the prior members of the school committee for really supporting that work. That's really wonderful. Thank you, Frank, also. I appreciate your longstanding relationship here and your, your continued service. Anna, did you have one more question to ask?
Yes, just kind of the follow-up to the policy question. Do we, we do have an accounting manual in place, right?
This is an Avi question.
Yes, to Avi, sorry.
I wouldn't say that we have an accounting manual. No, we have a lot of different types of things that resemble that. So we talked about the COSO framework, which has a lot of pieces of that, but that's primarily around federal awards. We also, one of the things that we put in place over the past several years due to frankly, the pain that happens when a small office has transitioned employees is to have documented procedures of what each of the positions do. And so we built out quite a large library that's been able to allow new people to come in and train quickly. We do cross-training for some positions. We don't do as much of that as I'd like us to do just because of how short staff we are. But that's something that was added to the job description for the new HR manager to be a backup, for example, for payroll. Which is something that we're going to train them on.
Is it me?
That's not something that we have, but in terms of practices and procedures, we have a ton of documentation around how to do business and an internal library that we can use.
I think you finished because he hit mute, Anna.
All right. So I, I think one thing I would recommend is their policy is really just to, you know, formalize a lot of different things, and it doesn't cover a lot of details. And, and Avi, maybe, you know, the finance subcommittee can work with you and Pam separately. I, I do recommend that we at least minimum should have an accounting manual in place to highlight quite a lot of different things in more detail. You know, one thing that, you know, for the lack of policy, at least we'll have some guidelines and procedures in place in the accounting manual. And especially if we have a small business unit, you know, for things like segregation, the duty is always hard to avoid, but it's just will be good to document it.
Yep. And I'm going to redirect this back because that, that's an appropriate conversation for new business, but it's not a recommendation that was made in this audit at this time. So we want to keep the conversation focused on that at this time. But I, can you please bring that up in subcommittee for us?
Of course.
Thank you. Anyone else on a second round before we thank Frank for his time? All right, Frank, thank you very much for your, your time. And, and thanks to Avi for also your clarification and your breakdown that you sent out in our packet so that we understand what we're reading here as we, as we learn from these. So thank you very much.
Thank you. My pleasure. Appreciate the opportunity to, to be here. Have a great night.
Thank you, Frank.
Thank you, Frank.
All right. So in case anyone jumped in late, we voted at the beginning of the meeting to rearrange our continued business in order to accommodate anyone who was interested in the turf field discussion, who might also be attending the sports meeting. So we are going to go next to the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three handbook updates and revisions for the high school and the middle school. And I'd like to do this in the same format that we did. So if we start with Trish for the high school, and then we'll invite Pam or Avi to offer any input and then open it up for questions and then do the same for Joanne.
Great. Thank you very much. So for the high school, you've seen the changes that we've made. I'll just go through them briefly. There were not many, there were not any substantial changes to our handbook this year as our school council was focused on our ten-year accreditation visit by New England Association of Schools and Colleges and the response to that following. And there wasn't any push for any substantial change. You'll see the things that we've changed as we've updated our mission, vision, and core values to match those adopted, adopted by the district. Each year we update our dates for National Honor Society induction, and that really is to provide structure to that program. Quarter dates are updated each year. Midterm and final language was changed. We took out the idea of exams and put in culminating experiences to match really where we're going as a school. Although we do have some culminating exams, we are really looking to the application of learning in terms of experiences at the end of the school year. One area that they, I admit that there was a typo that I need to change was the idea on senior privilege. We removed junior from the junior senior privilege, which also should have included the end-of-day dismissal at one fifteen. Prior to COVID, we only had senior year, senior privilege. We allowed juniors to have that privilege during the COVID years to help reduce our class sizes. We have found, however, though, our junior students should be enrolled in seven classes as our freshmen and sophomores are. And again, in our schedule, five classes meet per day, so they don't go to seven classes per day. The reason for seniors being able to have a study hall is so that they can be working on their college process during the fall of their senior year. And it is incumbent upon us to meet time on learning, and that would really limit the study halls for underclassmen, particularly where we have U block as part of our schedule. And then the last piece was the long-term and expulsion language, adding educational plans to that language. And that's required under law, section seventy, sorry, chapter seventy-one, section thirty-seven and a half. During a review, it was noted that that specific language was not included, although it is included in the law which is cited. So we've added that language and we'll be adding the options for educational plans while long-term suspended or expelled on the website prior to the start of school this year, and that will be under pupil services. So I wanted to go through quickly since I don't have substantive change, but I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Trish. And Pam, did you want to add anything to that? Pam or Avi?
No, my only comment was going to be kind of an overview as to the why the handbooks, why we're seeing middle and high school and not elementary and why handbooks come before the school committee. I think I put it in my notes. It's just very simplistically. It's the cross-section between policy that may be enforced in the area of student discipline and ensuring that it is aligned with overall district policy. So that the, the school council, which has the charge of annually reviewing and making recommendations for change in the handbook, doesn't put something in play that is going to run afoul of other policies and then create an implementation problem down the line. So there's nothing in the handbook this year that is a concern in that area. That's just a why.
Thank you.
That's very helpful. So just, just to clarify, Pam, before I turn it over, or before I open it up for school committee questions, are you looking, do we need to take a vote to approve this because we are vouching for that alignment? Okay, so maybe before we do questions, I might entertain a motion to approve the changes to the high school handbook as stated. And once we have a motion, we can have discussion with questions. Is there a motion?
So moved. Jake.
Thank you. Thank you, Jake. Is there a second?
Second, Kate. Feel like our motions are a little slow tonight. Sorry.
Like, am I, am I confusing?
Teresa, feel free to make the motion. Then it's easier to second.
Well, I would rather, okay, you know, I could, I could do that, but.
We just wanted to watch you sweat.
Does anyone from the school committee have questions for, for point of, point of inquiry for Trish before we discuss? Jake, you look like you'd like to say something.
I'll, I'll just ask.
Or recognize as Jake.
Trish, I appreciate the, the inclusion of the culminating activities. I think we talked about that at your last presentation where you described what was happening at the end of last year. I, I hear what you're saying now that that was in part through a conversation with the school council. Is that the case?
Um, yes, that's something. So during this year at school council, we focused on our NIESK evaluation and then also that implementation of student-centered learning, what that means, what that is, and how that looks in terms of assessing students.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have questions, again, regarding the changes, not, not the handbook generally speaking? Seeing none, does anyone have discussion about this? I, I will offer some discussion. I think that they are appropriate changes. I, I like the, the language of the culminating experiences because it doesn't, it doesn't exclude the possibility of an, of an exam, a traditional exam, but broadens the language in that way. Thank you for the clarification also about the, the junior senior, because I wasn't sure if we were doing two separate things, so that's great.
My apologies.
No problem. Anyone else have anything they'd like to share about this before we take a vote to approve? No, then the motion before us is to approve the high school handbook changes for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year, and I will take roll call vote. Anna?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Jake?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Trish. Joanne, your turn.
Hi, everybody. How are you? Happy summer. It's been going by quickly. So as you know, we're here to discuss proposed changes to three sections of the middle school handbook. The tardy policy language, the student appearance currently called dress code language, and some revisions to our discipline language based on the processes that we currently follow. I'd like to start with the, the tardy policy language and would love to share some data with you before we get into the discussion so that you can see where this change request stemmed from. So I've got a very quick, can you all see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, I've got a quick presentation here to run you through so that you can look at some data and understand what we're, what we're looking at. The current tardy language, as you know, is very benign. It simply states that if you're, you know, if you arrive beyond seven forty-five AM, you're late for school. And it talks about the school day. It doesn't really discuss any possible consequences or whatnot. So reviewing the data around student tardies and discussing this with my school council and, well, school council specifically, we thought it made sense to put a little bit more teeth into this because we have some challenges, which I will show you here. So just quick highlights. Class of twenty twenty-six is the current ninth grade. It's the eighth grade that just moved on to the high school. Class of twenty twenty-seven is our current eighth grade. They just rose up from seventh grade, and then we have our current seventh graders who just rose as sixth graders. I've got total students listed at each grade. How many students within that number had, were never late? And then the average number of tardies at each grade level, which, as you know, in the new language we're proposing, we're, we're asking to, to provide five days of free, so to speak, tardies. And then each tardy after that fifth day would incur an after. And then each tardy after that fifth day would incur an after-school detention. So our average tardies across each grade level are right around that 15-day mark, which is great. We're just looking to bring the, bring the overall number, I would say the, you know, the mean back to closer to that tardy number. So specifically, if we look at class of 2026, eighth graders who just moved out of middle school, those individual dots represent students. You can see I've got the 15-day tardy mark here, and then all every day beyond 15 days is indicated here with the highest number of tardies indicated here, 104 days, 95, et cetera. All in all, about a third of this class was tardy, late for school, more than the 15 days, which we're proposing to move towards without any consequence. Similarly, for our current eighth graders, again, 31%, a third of the class has more than 15 days late. Here are the extreme numbers. And also current seventh graders, 24%, still close to that one-third of the class, has more than 15 days being late from school, late for school. If we look at the specific demographics of this group, students who were tardy more than 15 days, so we're looking at that one-third population now and drilling down into that. 76%, about 61 students are Manchester residents, 20% Essex, and 4% are choice students coming from Beverly and Gloucester. It's three kids. And of that 76%, which is our largest percentage, 64% of that number or 40 students live less than one and a half miles from school. So we're talking about our walkers, our bikers, our kids who may be getting a quick drive in the morning from, from parents. So that's just, and I'll come back to this if you want to look at the specifics, but just so we can all see each other. So we clearly have an issue with some habitual lateness to school, and it's something that impacts the student who is late because they're arriving, they're missing the first few minutes of class, they are probably feeling anxious, they've been rushing, you know, in many cases. So it just sets them off for a bad day, sets a bad tone. It's also disrupting all of our classrooms within the whole school building when you consider a third at each grade level is late for the day. So you've got kids straggling in after classes have already started, after instruction has begun, and teachers have to interrupt instruction or update the student on what's happening. So all in all, it's just, it's something that needs to turn around. And I think one way to do that is to disincentivize being late to school by putting in this after-school detention policy after the fifth day. So we're talking about five days a trimester. A trimester is about 60 days of school. So that's still a fairly good, you know, number in terms of allowances for being late. And anything beyond that, we would, we would have the kids stay. It's an inconvenient for the student, it's an inconvenient for the parent, and perhaps will disincentivize those habitually absent students. This is a life skill that is important to learn. It's important to show up on time to places. My mother always said 10 minutes early. It prepares them for the high school with a little bit more of a strict tardy policy in terms of number of days. And as you may know, students who have excessive tardies at the high school can't participate in extracurricular sports, et cetera. So that is the proposal, and I'm happy to take questions and open to discussion.
Do we want to take this one at a time, Pam? Or we're going to vote to do it all at once? Maybe we could.
I would do all of it and then do questions.
Okay.
Okay. The next one is student appearance. The current language is called dress code, and it's very linear, very descriptive in terms of length of clothing, what can be exposed, what can't be exposed. And as you know, we're really, the culture of our country right now, where our kids are in terms of how they want to be seen in the world, how they want to express themselves in the world, how they culturally identify with one another is changing. It was changing pre-pandemic. It's definitely changed post-pandemic. Our kids have found their voices a bit. They're, they're pushing back on some things that they may feel are unfair treatment or specifically targeting specific groups based on how they choose to express themselves, based on how they choose to identify themselves, based on how they choose to present themselves in the world. So we're looking to move our language towards where our kids are. We're talking about 11- to 14-year-old children. And developmentally speaking, you can have one item, one outfit on one student, and then put it on another student, and it looks fine. There's no violations on one student, but it's a violation for the other because of where that child is developmentally. When I, so to our, in our school, we don't have a lot of issues with dress code. The predominance of issues come with hats and hoods and things like that. I know culturally speaking, in terms of taking your hat off when you're in a formal environment, it is something. But we have students who have health conditions that require them to wear hats. We have students who may have gotten a bad haircut and don't want to come to school, but if they can put a hat on and keep it on for the day, they're going to come to school. We have students who have experienced trauma, and wearing a hat or being able to keep a hood up allows them to stay in the learning environment. So this is something that the middle school faculty and staff is aware of, and they are understanding and lenient when it comes to individual student situations. Of course, everyone is different, and everyone has a different threshold, so some teachers ask students to remove hats and some don't. I just want to be careful when it comes to how we talk to our kids. School should be a welcoming, safe environment. I don't want our students to feel body-shamed. I don't want them to feel that the way they choose to look is a distraction to others. It's not a child's responsibility to worry about if they are distracting someone else, you know, within, within reason. So the way we would handle this in terms of teachers noticing is we ask them to talk to myself or Kim Provo. They talk to, tell us who the child is. Kim or I identify the child, take a look, see what we think, and we call the parent. I would much rather have a conversation about the child's attire with a parent than with the child. It's just, it's, it can be an experience that it sticks with kids really for the rest of their lives. They, the situations where I have had adults point out children's clothing, it's been predominantly girls that this happens to. The girls feel shameful, they feel embarrassed, they don't want to go to that class again. It breaks any kind of relationship they've had with the teacher. So I do want to soften things up, and I would like to have an environment where it's freer for individual expression. And I'd like to put the responsibility of how a child dresses in the, in the lap of the parent, because I believe that's where it belongs. And lastly, is our discipline language, which we're just looking to change it based on what we do. We changed the process. My predecessor put in a yellow-red card system, which we worked with for a couple of years, and it just became really cumbersome and became more of a management tool and didn't really allow teachers to respond in the moment effectively and then let myself or Kim Provo know what was happening. So it just became, you know, this never-ending spreadsheet of details and whatnot. So we're, we moved more towards just a spirit and environment, environment of focusing on student social emotional health, making sure they understand appropriate behavior rules, making sure they understand the consequences to those things. In many cases, teachers handle it on their own. In most cases, the teachers do it, and they do it quite effectively. And in those outlier circumstances where we need to get involved, we, meaning myself and Kim Provo, we do that, and the teachers inform us and let us know. So that's it?
Thank you, Joanne. Following a similar format, I'd like to invite Pam, if she, if you'd like, if you have anything you'd like to add to that. And then I think that because there's so much there in comparison to the high school, maybe we do questions first, then entertain a motion and deliberate if necessary. Pam, anything to add?
No additional comment.
Thank you. Are there any questions regarding these specific changes proposed from school committee? Kate?
Yeah. Hi, Joanne. Thank you for the graphics. I like, I'm a data person.
If you want to see them.
No, that's all right. I'm just wondering what the existing language is around what constitutes an excused tardy.
So it would be in line with the state guidelines and what we do for absences. So medical appointments, bereavement, you know, needing to be out for hospitalization, whatever the case is. So similar to an excused absence. That said, you know, I look at those, those three choice students or four choice students coming from Gloucester, Beverly.
That was my question, yeah.
Yeah, so I think there are circumstances where, and it really is a case-by-case situation. There are some instances where children are experiencing school avoidance. Are people coming from Beverly, Gloucester, traffic, you know, all sorts of things can happen. So I don't want to be a tyrant and buy the book. I do want to be open and partner with the parent to understand what the key challenges are and find out what we can do. The goal is to get the kids to school and to get them to school on time. So I think partnerships with parents is the best way to do it. I'm hoping that this new language will really bring the majority back to that average number, right around 15. And then, of course, we will always have the outliers that have really a variety of challenges. Oftentimes, it's family systems issues. Sometimes we have court involvement, and that has been helpful. Or I, I introduce the fact that court involvement could be coming, and that sometimes is enough. So I think just having a strict policy to lean back on is really helpful, and right now I just don't have that.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Thanks, Kate. I see Erica has used the hand raised feature. Erica?
I like this feature. Hi, Joanne. I was just wondering, maybe you said this and I missed it, but what, how does this align, if at all, with the high school?
So the high school is, and Tricia's here, I think, unless she popped off, but the high school is three, oh, there she is, up in my corner. It's three days. Tricia, do you want to just talk for a minute about, overview the high school's policy so I don't misspeak?
I guess, so I don't want to make you all, I'll say too much. Why don't I, I see if I can get to my question without making Trish go through the policy, maybe. I'm just wondering if it makes sense that the policies be aligned or if the facts are such that we don't have the issue at the high, I mean, I appreciate most importantly, Joanne, what you said about life skill. Like, this is smart, this is important. But it would be surprising to me if we have different, a different set of issues at the high school. Maybe we do. We've got drivers, kids are getting themselves there, maybe kids are avoiding it on their own. But if they're not, I would think we'd want to align the policy. So that, that is, I guess, more getting to my question.
I think some of the issues could be similar, but I think it's really important to differentiate between middle school and high school. Yes, we're in the same building, but we're two completely different schools, and we're talking about children at very different developmental stages. The 11- to 14-year-old is very different than the 15- to 18- or 19-year-old in terms of what they're capable of, in terms of the challenges that they have. So I think we could align in some respects, but we always have to be very cognizant of the students in our individual schoolhouses and what makes the most sense for them.
Thank you. Jake has also used the hand raised feature. Go ahead, Jake.
Hi, Joanne. I appreciate the data as well. I had a, I had a question about whether or not this would impact families who did not walk, right? That you're now requiring parents to come pick them up once they had a detention and so on. So I appreciate the clarification that this is mainly an issue with walkers. I'd be interested to know if you investigated why it seems to be such an issue with walkers. It's, it certainly seems like that would be more about disciplining the student because they seem to, you know, probably control it, which I'm, I was worried about, right? That it would be more about disciplining the parents if it was based on the parents' inability to get the student there on time. But did you ask or find out kind of what it is that seems to be impacting the walkers more than the bus or drivers?
So I didn't do anything formally. I can tell you anecdotally, I think it's walkers and it's also students, you know, that may be getting a ride, particularly in inclement weather. One of the things we see at the middle high school every morning is a long line of traffic of people waiting. And I've taken a couple of days of standing in the cafeteria and watching. And what happens, and I think this is a habit that was learned at the elementary level that we need to reteach, and exactly how we do that, I'm not sure. But the cars come in and they wait until they're right in front of the building, and then they let their student out. And that's, and I just see, you know, the car is coming, coming, coming. It's, you know, a good two or three minutes. Boom, they get right in front of the building and let the student out. So that's a retraining of sorts, and I think it would also help with the traffic issue if people weren't waiting for that front of the building, if they just let the kids out, even maybe on Lincoln Street, not pull into the property, that might help. So I think that could be a minor issue because a lot of the tardies that we have are 7:48, 7:50, you know, just a couple of minutes past the start of the school day. Some of it is that parents go to work in the morning and more so before remote learning, the remote world. But, you know, some of these kids are left to get themselves up on their own. Some of them are dealing with younger siblings in the home. So that is something that helps create the tardy. That's something we can partner with, with parents. And some of it is just, people are late, you know, some people, we all know those friends, I have them, they drive me crazy. They're late to everything, no matter what it is, they're always late. So I think that's just kind of, just the way certain people run their, their lives. How we deal with that, I don't know. But again, I think it's about partnering and problem-solving with the families that bubble to the surface once and if, I should say, this, this new policy language is approved.
So I appreciate that you're, you're saying that you'd take some action and partner with families and try to figure that out. Obviously, the policy, you know, the manual itself can do nothing really except say, here's the consequence. But I'm glad to hear you say that you'll be a little more proactive with those families. Thank you.
Sure.
I had a couple of other questions that are not related to that, and I don't think impact the handbook as it's presented here, but just questions that might inform future versions.
So let's hold those if they're not related to the agenda for tonight, and we can send them out separately.
They are, because there are changes being made to the language in these, in these instances. So for one example.
To these changes?
Yeah, the device use, right? There's changes being suggested to the use of device, which fundamentally is, at least the way I read it, is about shutting down all devices that students bring and monitoring that they are, you know, turned off basically during school, but students can still hold them. Yet at high school, we seem to allow students to use them until it becomes a distraction. So I just noted that there was, you know, the language we use in the middle school version is pretty extensive in describing that, and the high school were very brief about it. Is there, I'm not sure that's going to be fixed, you know, or changed for this version, because that would be some work to adjust that, but I just wanted to know what kind of conversations are happening about how we help students and faculty make use of devices for educational purposes versus just try to keep them out, because it seems like we need to prepare kids in the high school. You know, as they get to high school, there seems to be okay to do that and encouraged to do that.
Yeah, I'm prepared to address that. Do we, are we ready to move on from the tardy questions or discussion?
We put everything on the table, so I thought it was.
They're all fair, they're all fair game. It's just Jake's answer question, ask this question.
So I come back with the, with your, that, those are excellent thoughts, Jake, for sure. And continuity and vertical alignment is something we think about all the time, we talk about all the time. It's really important, particularly as we move into vision of the graduate and moving forward to the life skills that we expect our students to have. It's really important, again, to remember that we are two separate schools, even though we occupy the same building, and the developmental readiness of students, it's everything. It's what we base our decisions on. So the primary reason for the device language change at the middle school level is specifically the developmental capabilities of our kids. An 11-year-old is not capable of having a cell phone with them all day and attending to the task of learning within a classroom. Teachers often have the kids use their phones for a variety of different things. They may use some of the tools on the phone, like the measuring device or the compass device or the photos or the calculator. So teachers often say, get your phones, we're going to use it for these purposes, and now you're going to put your phones back. We're moving to a program called Go Guardian, which is a software program that will allow teachers to see student screens when they're working on their Chrome. We're moving to a program called Go Guardian, which is a software program that will allow teachers to see students' screens when they're working on their Chromebook. So having a student with their own device, first of all, um is just a an accident waiting to happen and a a expensive, personal, broken device waiting to happen. But also, if students aren't using school provided Chromebooks, then the Go Guardian software that we have won't work on their on their um device. So our kids are digital natives, they're very savvy, a large percentage of our kids are big game. They they connect with friends through video chats, through, you know, texting and whatnot. And it's just a strong lure for them throughout the day. So we are doing everything that we can to keep the environment educationally focused um by asking them to keep cellphones off and away, could be in their locker, could be in their backpack. Again, developmentally, our sixth graders use their lockers, our eighth graders carry their backpacks around because they're getting ready to move to the environment at the high school. So it's more of a, it it it's not a punishment, it's not saying these are evil, evil, that's not the right word. But it's not saying these devices aren't inappropriate things are inappropriate for learning, they're very appropriate for learning, but we have to model it. We have to explicitly say, now it's time to go get this and et cetera. Otherwise, we just, they just won't be there. They won't be attending, they won't be learning. So an eleven year old can't handle it. An eighteen year old, you're not going to take a phone away from an eighteen year old, you know, they're more mature. They understand the uses, they're able to split their attention a little bit better than a child whose brain is going through such extreme changes from, you know, that eleven to fourteen year old. So I think Tricia and I could certainly sit down and see where it would be appropriate for us to align language. But at the same time, we both very much have to keep our own kids at the center of the conversation and make sure that we're doing it's what's best for our students at each level.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, Jake, for framing that, too, in the, that definitely was pertinent, no question about it. Any other school committee members in order here who have not taken Anna, Chris, or Matt before I ask my question?
I'm good.
Okay. Um, my question is, uh basically, it is connected to this by way of um ho- hoping for a purpose here. How do you plan to get the word out about this? About these, about the changes if they are approved, and is this something that parents are going to have a chance uh to to talk to you about? Or, oh, and I I did have one other question, then I'll just leave them to you. In the tardy question, I did notice um that parents need to report by seven thirty A M. So if parents don't report on time, the children are also connected to that consequence. And is this something that you're going to be looking at case by case, or is this something that you're really feeling like is a retraining for parents as well? I don't know why Manchester doesn't use the zipper line like we do in S X to avoid some of this, but but I can see that it's definitely an issue.
So I think um because of the age of kids we're talking about, it's mostly a retraining of parents, but it's also a retraining of students, of course. You know, we all have those kids, have had the kids or have them now that we can't get out of bed, you know, it's very challenging. Um, so I think having a little bit of a inconvenience for the student, you know, and and framing it with the student as, you know, you missed some time at school and you need to make up that time, um really taking out of the pu- taking it out of the punishment realm. And in terms of notifying parents, I send a welcome letter out at the beginning of every school year. I will reference it in the welcome letter uh with an electronic link to the handbook, and then I plan to send um specific communications. As those of you who have had middle school kids, I send communications out every Friday. I'll include the information in that. But I'll also include a specific email communication um to parents as many times as I think I need to, based on what the data is showing, and it probably will be quite often. We also have an assembly with the kids first day of school where we go over rules and expectations, and I'll be pointing it out to the kids at that time, too.
Thank you. I see Erica has a question.
Yeah, sorry, I I was doing them one by one. So I had started with the tardy, and I had another comment or question about the dress code. I appreciate where this is coming from and the thought that was put into it by the council. But I guess I I would say that it sounds to me like you're putting a real challenge in the hands of the educators. As the more we remove things that are black and white, the more individual discretion there is for each child's, you know, or or each educator's. What means appropriately dressed, um I hear that, and I just think that's gra- that's kind of fodder for difficult conversations and challenges and more. The educators already have so much on their hands, and I look at this and I'm like, oh, my gosh, it's one more thing they've got to deal with every day. So I I would throw to you the the one that I think is most ubiquitous at the middle school, which is hoods. So, you know, you have a class of twenty kids who are now all wearing their hoods. I couldn't tell from what you were saying, um does that mean that the teacher then is contacting you who is going to have to place calls to twenty kids' parents to see if some of them have a legitimate reason for wearing their hoods, while others maybe just prefer to wear their hoods? I mean, all of mine do all the time.
Yeah.
That's hard, I think.
Yeah, you you make, you raise a really good point, and I completely agree that our teachers have a lot on their plates and a lot of responsibilities, and I certainly don't want to add more. Um, I, we, we're a small school, we know our kids really well, so we tend to know um who needs to have the hood or whom who may from time to time want to put their hood up or put their hat on. And um our dean of students, Kim Provo, meets with teachers weekly to talk about students who are having challenges, students who are doing well, whatnot. She meets with them at the team level. Um, on, at the first faculty meeting with teachers, um if this language is approved, I'll be sharing it with them and opening it to discussion. And depending on how much discussion is generated by that, um then I can dip into team meetings and we can talk about it further. But essentially, what I'll ask them to do is to let me or Kim know if they have a concern with a chi- child's attire. Um, honestly, uh many teachers who happen to be male teachers, have many, meaning about five, have said to me, out of out of twenty-five, have said to me, I'm not going to mention anything about what a student is wearing. I'm not going near that topic with a ten foot pole, you know, they feel that it is a bit of a landmine. So um they would, they have no trouble coming to me or Kim. So, long answer, uh more discussion to be had, but we're talking about a lot of different things right now with our D E I work. And so this is one to put on the table and let us all kind of hash it out and figure out what we think the best approach is as a team.
I I guess I'm good with that. I just just be, you know, we should be cognizant that you are, in fact, removing the language, right? I don't have it in front of me, but there used to be language that said no hats and no hoods, and that language is going to be stricken, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and so I can see the the challenging seventh, eighth grader saying, wait a second, like there's no dress code anymore that says this, and in fact, we're going to inform the students of the changes being made.
Yeah.
It's going to be really hard to enforce against some and not others. So I, you know, that gives me some pause, but.
Yeah. So it's i- i- it's an opportunity to have a teachable moment with students and help them understand that fair isn't always equal and that some people need certain things that other people don't need. And as members of a caring community, we need to recognize the fact that certain people may need things that other people don't need. Um, so again, it's e- every moment we spend with the kids, whether it's, you know, me or Kim and and every single adult in the building, it's an opportunity to teach them. And we we seize those opportunities when we when we can and have to.
So I'd like to gently redirect to, I think, we're we're sliding into debate rather than clarifying questions at this point. So perhaps now's a good time to um put a motion on the table. So I will put a motion on the table that uh I move that we approve the changes to the middle school handbook for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year as proposed. Is there a second?
Second, Foster.
Thank you, Jake. And now now we can deliberate and and share our things again in an orderly fashion as we have done. So Erica, um I think those are noted points. I'll reserve my comments uh until the end. Pam, please.
Just a comment or maybe a way, as I'm looking, listening to Joanne and Erica, I I'm hearing them both, but I'm I'm sensing, and I think I know. Joanne, is it fair to say your concern is that a rigid adherence to a black and white rule is is limiting your ability to assist students who who need a different way of being able to cope in the environment?
Yes, um and it's also hurting children. It's it's not helping the students who become the tar- the become the focus of um this topic.
So the ambiguity brings problems, but the rigidity brings an equal number of problems. So you're kind of caught in the middle. I think that's what I'm hearing you say, like, there's really no good, there's no perfect language that's going to solve your problem and give black and white where we need it and then openness where we need it. And just knowing some of the things that you might struggle, not you personally struggle with, but issues that are brought forward to you. Where you might have a child that needs to wear a hat, but the refrain is that, but the handbook says no hat, but the handbook says no hat. So it's limiting your ability to um personalize the educational experience for kids.
Yeah, and the new language does say that the child, I don't know what exactly, but should adhere to reasonable requests. Um, and that's where the teaching comes in by myself or Kim, that, you know, what is reasonable and why is it reasonable and, yeah, et cetera.
So maybe one thing we could do here would be to um to break this down so that we can see where we're at. So starting with the the tardy um scenario, are there any deliberations that we need to have as far as school committee? My personal feeling on this is that it's um, again, school council driven, which to me is huge because that means there was there was uh broad involvement by people. I think school council gets wildly underrated um and does not get nearly the the credit it deserves as a powerful body. And having had the answers to my questions uh answered, I can see where this is coming from. Is there anyone who has concerns about that, Jake?
I'm just uh clarifying, are these um, are these school committee policies the, or are we just approving the handbook and these are really school level policies? Because I don't, I don't think we necessarily are, we're not voting on each and every edit here, right? We're just saying yes or no to the handbook, right?
We're saying yes or no to the changes. These are school building level policies. But but our vote is to approve them based on whether or not they align with the district policies that we have. And I have no, I there, I haven't seen anything that says that that's the case. Um, at the same time, these are things that are of interest, so if we have thoughts and concerns, now is the time to bring them up.
Yeah, I would say.
There's no district policy governing dress.
Right, and and basically, I think Tracy put it well, I don't see anything that contradicts policy that we've made at the school committee level.
So that being the case, it can be as easy as that, eh, that that there is nothing to contradict this. Okay, so are we in, are we in agreement that with the, or I mean, do we even need to take this all three? That with the tardy policy, the dress code uh policy and the discipline policy language changes, we don't see anything that contradicts uh anything in our policy that would hinder us from voting in favor of this? Does anyone have anything they need to say on that front?
If the committee would decide that it can't support the proposals, the handbook as submitted. Remember, the whole handbook is submitted to you, and they've highlighted the changes, then you vote it down and you send it back to school council. Additional work, and they have to come back to you.
I'm not hearing any or seeing anyone with that, though, so Erica.
There's this one, one question. Um, you know, Joanne, this is, this is your your domain and your area, and I I respect your judgment in it. Did the teachers that participate in school council agree that this makes sense and is possible to administer in a way that's not taking time away from, you know, what we hope is really, you know, teaching the class?
They did, um and I really appreciate the fact, Erica, that you're thinking about the teachers. It's, it's, you know, happy teachers, happy kids, kind of. So I really appreciate that. Um, so yes, school, school council did, but I also, you know, want to bring this or will bring this forward to my entire faculty and staff so that we can talk about it. Um, I believe really strongly in um collective decision making in some respects. So uh and I want to hear what their concerns are and make sure that we're we're addressing them effectively.
Okay. Okay. Barring any further comment, I will move the vote on this. Uh, the vote on the table is, the motion on the table is to approve the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three middle school handbook as submitted with changes. And I will go in roll call fashion. Anna?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Jake?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. The motion passes unanimously, and thank you for all your work and for your uh explanation and answering questions. Building, building in the information to your presentation as well that we needed uh to understand it well.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so now we are back to our continued business, our reordered continued business uh with the turf field progress report. And I would like to invite Avi to present on this.
Again, um, and Pam, did you want to put the slides up or do you want me to do that?
I can do that. I think I have them um ready to go.
Thank you. And uh joining us tonight uh is Jason Waldron, our facilities manager. Thanks, Jason, for joining us. Who has really been an amazing source of support for M E R S Ts as we go through this process due to his uh longstanding familiarity and expert um knowledge as a professional in this industry, even prior to coming to M E R S Ts. Did facilities manager at Hamilton Wenham, but also worked for many years in athletic facilities um yeah, in many different venues, including professional sports and at Harvard University. And it's just been great to have a person who's been through this before, who has a lot of experience. Jason will be here to help us as we go through some questions. Also, excuse me, Kathy Hermal is here, who is one of the project managers at Gale Associates to help us answer any questions if we need to get into the technical level and technical domain. As quick background, you may all remember that we put out a request for proposals from design firms to help us uh and guide us through the putting together specifications, but also ge- getting us through the process that we're hoping to start after this meeting, which is permitting um through their expert knowledge. And so it's been great to work with Gale, and they've really helped us in a lot of things. So um as we pull up these slides, um I think the first item on there that I want to go through is just the timeline. And uh we've really relied uh on Gale Associates to help us with the timeline. For those of you who may have been here over the past year and a half as we went through this, we originally um were hoping to get uh turf field installed, uh one of them this summer. Uh, what we found out uh was that uh the entire industry had some uh backlog from orders that had happened a year before that got slid into this year. So that what was normal, a normal timeline uh really wasn't able to happen. Um, but the timeline here that you're seeing is is a timeline that we got from Gale Associates. So they've really told us what we need to do to be on time based on their industry knowledge. So the good news is that they're they're kind of starting us with the work we're at today to be in a place where we can get a committed uh contract in place uh really by the December, January timeframe. And uh based on what they're seeing in the industry, they do a lot of this work. They've told us that they believe that that's going to put us in great position to be lined up for a summer project for twenty twenty-three. And so that's good. Uh, but so if there are questions about the timeline, I'll let Gale answer them, but let me just give you a very brief highlight, which is that working backwards from that timeline, starting with the end in mind, uh we really um want to be able to release the bid in the November, December timeframe. And to do that, we need to have specifications in place. And to do that, um the design work is now seventy-five percent complete. But the piece that we still need to get finished is getting through the permitting process. And we had one item that we wanted to make sure that the subcommittee had a chance to review. Uh, and so we have subcommittee members who are here uh on the call uh who have also been really helpful as we go through the steps to see if we can make a recommendation um on turf infill, which we want to do tonight. We'll get to that in a second, um as well as some other, you know, decisions around um some of the option to put in a shock pad underneath the uh the turf system. So um, once we can get this final, you know, item approved tonight of of how we would design the infill system, that would allow us to hand it uh over to Gale to immediately begin the permitting process in the town of Manchester, which is where these fields are located. Uh, they've already been in touch with Conservation Commission. We know um that sometimes that can be a very um uh engaged review. Uh, what we've heard so far preliminarily, or Gale has heard, because they, one of their first steps upon coming on board was to reach out to Conservation Commission, was that um while there will be a review and a permitting process, the initial thought is that this would be looked at as a simply replacement of the surface uh system rather than a whole construction of a new field. And so for that reason, that um is looking to potentially help uh expedite. System rather than a whole construction of a new field. And so for that reason, that is looking to potentially help expedite quite a bit the review. So for example, we're not talking about digging up the entire undercarriage system, all the drainage. There was a lot of construction that went into these fields underneath the carpet and underneath the infill. That was part of the Concom review. So it's really more of a maintenance project, we believe, having reached out to them. But we're going to let Concom have the final say on that before we speak for them. So that's good news. But it does make us want to make sure we can get tonight's work done in terms of that approval. So let's take that and move it on to the next item, which is what some of the things we reviewed are. And then we'll be happy to open up for questions when we're done. So on the infill review. Knowing that this is a question that comes up in a lot of communities, we wanted to make sure we leverage the expertise of Gale. To find out what's available, what are the options and what should we be considering? What are the pros and cons? And I think I would just start with, you know, here, the first and last continuity and common. I think are the two items that I would bring everyone's attention to rather than reading these slides. And on continuity, what we're talking about basically is replacing like with like. You know, we know what we've had and we don't have any information based on our review of the pros and cons that would suggest that we should be moving away from what we've used. But it's also very common. And so Gale has informed us that out of the last fifteen fields that they've worked in, only five use alternative infills. So this is still by far the most common. Obviously, people have asked questions about health. There has not been any evidence to support. Health risk despite quite a bit of research into that. And Gale can answer more questions about that. As well as affordability, we would be adding significant cost to the project if we went with an alternative info. And given that it doesn't, what we have for playability is quite good. Once we get the carpet issues resolved. And all those things are leading me to say that, you know, I would recommend that we stick with what we have. I certainly want to make sure that the subcommittee members have a chance to kind of talk about what they heard in the review before we kind of open it up for questions. Because they were able to participate as well. And we could get into a lot more detail about the various types of other surfaces that we we looked at. They're listed in the very first bullet cork. Coconut, walnut, engineered wood fiber, et cetera, et cetera. So moving to the next slide is just some of the additional considerations. When you install items other than chrome rubber, which is what we're recommending, what we have today. Or at least what I would propose, I won't speak for the subcommittee. You, a shock pad is required under the system to provide additional, I would say, impact support. And so that's not required for a chrome rubber infill like the one we have and like the one I would suggest that we might stick with. But they do provide additional benefits and they do come with a much longer warranty, whereas the typical turf warranty is eight years. As we've talked about before, the shock pads, which add about a hundred thousand dollars of cost. Their typical warranty is about sixteen years. So you could get two cycles out of a shock pad. Potentially based on the warranty alone. And they do help to bring with it a guarantee on the G max rating. And for those of you who remember some of our prior meetings about the turf situation. G max is a industry standard for impact and hardness. And, you know, essentially making sure that when players fall and hit the turf, that the impact cushion is sufficient to avoid injuries. And so having that additional pad was something that caught the attention of a lot of people on our subcommittee group. As a potential additive, even though it is expensive, that could yield an actual safety benefit, even though it's not required. So that's something I think when we open it for any feedback from the subcommittee or from Jason. I would, I would, you know, we can talk about. And then the last item I do want to touch on very briefly was just the issue of PFAS, PFAs. Which is essentially a chemical that is, has been in some turf compositions, not as the main additive. But in some cases, a mixing agent. And there's a question about PFAS is very preliminarily studied about their impact on for health reasons, for ingestion, not for contact. And as a result, people in several communities have asked about what we what we should know related to PFAS. That could leach from a field into drinking water. So and we know that we have a group in the town of Manchester that's a water study group. That has also come to us to say, what information can you share with us as they go through their own drinking water study? And basically, you'll, I'll let Gale answer the technicalities. But the available research that's out there does not suggest that what is in turf, which by the way, would be in the in the fibers, not in the infill. Is leaching into communities drinking water based on the studies that have been done. One of the studies that was shared with us was by a firm called Weston and Sampson. They're an engineering firm that's very well known and reputed. They also, I believe, are working with the town of Manchester separately on some of their work. In in the area of environmental engineering. So again, they're a well-known firm. So that was good news to hear that although there are questions, it doesn't seem to be an area that would lead us to think that we should be questioning. Or moving down a different path. Questions I think are relevant, but we didn't see any evidence there to lead us to have concerns that we thought we needed to raise to you. So that's really the summary. I'd love to see if we could maybe have, maybe just to first to start with Jason, before we move to the subcommittee. Just in case Jason, I've missed anything from a technical standpoint. And then I know the subcommittee probably has some input that they want to share as well.
No, you hit upon it all, Avi. So great work as always. You know, as Avi mentioned, you know, specifically when I was at Harvard, we did a number of turf fields installation, maintenance. And so certainly I recommend the the shock pad as well as the as the chrome rubber. I think there's, there's a lot of research on both and how effective that they are. And, you know, certainly something that I would recommend for our our next turf fields. And as, you know, kind of just going on that, you know, we've done a lot of maintenance to the fields, especially in the last few years. We just had field turf come out last week to do our kind of our annual grooming. You know, even with a new field, we would continue to do so. So and on top of that, we would look at additional equipment that our in-house maintenance team could do. On a more routine basis to to maintain the, you know, the safety of those fields.
Thing I would just add to that, I did see one question that came up because the town is going through its own process with its own. Look into potential fields, I believe in Sweeney. But also has been listening into our meetings and we've been updating them due to the shared use arrangement over at Brook Street. And just to make sure it's completely clear, we've had maintenance contracts on both turf fields for, I would say, over a decade. So really, the maintenance issues we're seeing now are about elongated use of the fields, especially when we talk about, you know, the warranty that's typically there. So there has been a very, you know, a consistent maintenance practice right now. What we're doing is having to do over and above maintenance, which we really want to get away from, which is, you know, we've talked about that to some length of why we want to move forward as soon as possible. So thank you, Jason.
Yep.
All right, then. So I I'm going to invite Matt, since he's also on the that subcommittee, to share his thoughts. But before, just a point of order and a point of clarification. So one, the point of order is that for our committee, we we've talked about. You know, the question comes up, why are we talking about this? And just to be clear, this is something that would not necessarily have so much background and time and and presentation in a regular meeting. This is some work that is done at the subcommittee level, just like other things as well. And the subcommittee is bringing forth a recommendation. But for the purposes of A, recognizing that we do have some new members who haven't been here through this discussion about the field for a couple of years. Also be recognizing that we do have some community members who who are here in attendance, trying to learn, learn where we're at. Who didn't have an opportunity to meet in advance to get some of this information. For those purposes, we're presenting more than would typically be the case. And so just, just so that we all know, this isn't the level of detail, the the work has been done. We are bringing a recommendation. And then for a point of inquiry from Avi, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding what's before us tonight. So if I'm understanding this, we're looking, we will be looking for a vote to approve the subcommittee's recommendation regarding type of infill used. And then if that passes, and I'm looking at you too, Jason, here, and then if that passes, a vote to approve, to move forward with the recommendation for the shock pad as well. So those are kind of two separate things. Am I, am I reading that right?
That's exactly right.
Correct. I mean, so Gale is at seventy-five percent, Avi might have mentioned, the seventy-five percent completion of their design work. And they can't get to a hundred percent without these these recommendations. So.
So those are the the two things that we're going to be considering for a vote tonight after Matt gives us his input. And then just, just to very quickly clarify as well, the PFA question, while pertinent and and necessary and informational. You said that refers only to the fibers, not the infill. So it's not actually something we're voting to deal with or not tonight. That's something that's another conversation.
Yeah, these are.
In the broader context.
More informational that we just want to get into public session, given the importance of this. And we know that people are curious. We want that to be an option, especially if community members are here or want to ask questions.
Perfect. Thank you. All right, Matt, would you like to, Matt and I have conferred, he knows how I feel. So I'll let Matt report out on our subcommittee.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll start with the kind of the conclusion, the recommendation that it is to proceed with the the chrome rubber as well as the shock pads. I think chrome rubber from, for the reasons that Avi stated, which is the replace in kind as well as primarily cost as well. And then shock pads, just kind of, I think, in the environment we're living in with sports and safety, I just think it's, it's the smartest thing to do to kind of, to to make sure we're creating the safest environment for the student athletes. Going back to the, the kind of the, the history of this, we, I believe we met, I think it was Wednesday, Wednesday, the twenty-ninth of June, so a little bit, a little bit back. And thank you to, for everyone who was available for that, especially Gale for their presentation, making, making some, some technology and some kind of a foreign subject very accessible to to the layperson. And I think a lot of, of the alternatives, I mean, I was kind of hunting for the Goldilocks during that presentation. I think there were a lot of other interesting kind of alternative infills. But none of them kind of seemed like it hit that sweet spot between costs and either maintenance requirements or just kind of things that made sense. So I think it it still does make the most sense for, so for example, like there was coated sand, which kind of has some, some drawbacks and doesn't kind of hit that environmental thing. There was, there was kind of virgin rubber, which kind of is the same product, but with a significantly higher price tag. And then there was just kind of plastic pellets, which I think were a harder surface and could melt in high temperatures. So a bunch of different alternatives. I was, I was, the closest I got to, I think, were the organic, well, what we're, what we're kind of quote unquote labeled organic, which was some of those natural products. I know some did require maintenance. However, I thought, I think walnut shells was the closest I got to thinking that that could be an alternative, because it seems like pretty low maintenance. I know it could freeze sometimes in the winter if it's retaining water. But it did seem like if we kind of wanted to be on the forefront, I know, I know the information Avi presented was that five of fifteen were the alternative infills. So not that that's not an excuse to go with what, what, what we've always done. However, like, you know, do we want to be kind of potentially on the forefront of a change to that, to what people are using for an infill? So that was a product, but I know, I I actually couldn't dig up the slide with what that additional cost would be. I think that was the biggest drawback to a product like that. So with that being said, it was a pretty significant increase to cost. And I know kind of going through last year's budget season and with kind of some of the uncertainty around how the budget will play out. In the coming year, especially with the, with using capital reserves, I think price has to be kind of at one of the top considerations on our list when doing this. And I also completely agree that it needs to get done, especially given what the, how that, how much the community has kind of voiced that this is a major priority. So with all that being said, kind of going back to where I started, that the the chrome rubber plus the shock pad does seem like the the sweet spot for this project. And that would be the recommendation from the the subcommittee.
Thank you, Matt. And I echo that again. I I think that the idea of the, using what we know and what is most financially reasonable for our situation. But also balancing that with the addition of the shock pads is really a move forward for us. Especially knowing that we'll get two, two cycles out of that. That's a real bonus for me. So as Matt said, our our subcommittee is in favor of this. Kathy, is there anything that you feel like you would like to add here, knowing that we have, you know, the the committee at your attention currently?
My attention? All I would say is on Gale behalf, you know, we've done numerous fields with chrome rubber. The majority of all our clients are going with the shock pad. As we all know, concussion and that type of injury is at the forefront of all athletics, particularly football. And we have found that, you know, fields, it takes a little bit more pressure off the maintenance, especially on the chrome rubber field. Because that shock pad, even if the chrome rubber isn't at the depth and that, that it's supposed to be in a particular location. That shock pad will guarantee that you're still meeting those safety requirements, the G max levels and such. So I think you're going with a great deal. I've, I've put in some other alternative fields. I think the biggest drawback on all of the other ones is is the price. And I think if you have intentions of using the field in the wintertime, unfortunately, the organic type tend to be. Flawed, that they do freeze, they hold moisture. We did coconut and corn husk out at Tantasca. And it, it, it functioned fairly well and they seemed happy with it, but they didn't intend to use it really in the wintertime. So they went with that. They, they, but they also had a lot of opposition from the public and felt they had to, to go with something else. And, you know, were able to get the funding for the extra cost. But a lot of times, that's really just what drives, you know, going with an alternative info.
Well, thank you, Kathy.
You're welcome.
Okay, so order of operations here. Let's invite any school committee members to ask questions again regarding specifically the infill selection. Or the addition of, or the, the use of shock pads at this time. Do any school committee members have questions about this? And then we'll move forward with the motion and deliberation.
Yeah, Tricia, I'm not sure I really have any questions, more so just, just a general statement, you know, being on the subcommittee last year. You know, it, it does seem that, you know, food information that I've seen here, using shock pads would really be fantastic. I think that would be a really solid use of our resources. So.
That's, that's, that's deliberation.
Sorry.
Jake, do you have a question?
I'm not sure if it's here for deliberation, but the, I'm in support of the, you know, the infill recommendation. If, if budget were not an issue, I'd totally be in support of the shock pad. Have we talked about the implications of dropping another hundred thousand on this? And I know, you know, we had this conversation when we did E E S playground, for example, and that was only thirty thousand and it was a big deal to spend that, right? We're, we're, we're throwing around a hundred thousand here as if it doesn't matter, but it must. What are the implications of that for our budget?
I think that's a question rather than a deliberation. That's very, Avi, would you like to speak to that? And then Pam?
Yeah, I think what we showed was that this project, or these two projects, will have a significant impact. Regardless of what we do with the field, regardless of what we do with the shock pad on our reserve funds. Where we had last estimated about six hundred thousand dollars per turf field in, you know, so this would bring that up. So it's an extra two hundred thousand dollars. I think, I guess what I would say is. Taking out the cost without the shock pads will, in my opinion, necessitate a strategy for how we get the reserves back to where we want them to be once we're done. And so I don't know that the, while the hundred thousand dollars is a very significant amount, I don't want to say it's small rounding error by any means relative to the big number. I think we have to figure out our multi-year strategy, no matter what. And based on that, I don't know if the one hundred thousand dollars would make a material difference for the replenishment strategy. a material difference for the replenishment strategy. But I think it is a valid question. It is, it is certainly very costly. And my only feeling is that's where sometimes I take off my budget hat and think about what's best for, for the kids. And I'm sure you agree, so I'm certainly not judging what you asked. So in that regard, I feel like it's hard to not agree to this, especially when you think about it being more like an effective cost of fifty thousand dollars per turf cycle if you get to. So I don't know if that's a good answer to your question or not, but that's my guess.
One other clarification, are we talking about an extra hundred thousand or an extra two hundred thousand? Is it per field?
One hundred thousand per field, correct.
So we're talking about extra two hundred thousand? Okay.
As a point of information, Jake, on that, I think Avi said it very well, but I will just clarify it, that in the budget process and the, the work that we have moving forward to go through the entire budget scenario and the correction scenarios as well. Again, this is if this happens, we're making a, a vote tonight to move forward as if this is the case, because that is the plan and schedule. Those conversations about whether or not, if we were going to make a change to it happening at all, would happen in that timeline. And they're necessary. Pam, go ahead.
All I would offer is, as I'm hearing it presented, not being an expert on the different infills, when we get to the issue of the safety pad, I'm hearing that there's a clear safety benefit to the student athletes that is now becoming standard operating procedure. So I would just caution, while we don't have an extra hundred thousand dollars, we also don't have the luxury of putting our kids at greater risk than our neighboring communities by short cutting there, especially if I'm, I'm hearing correctly that it is now commonplace to put that in. And, and if I'm misunderstanding, you know, I, please correct me on my interpretation. And I would equate that to our action on bringing forward, on removing the Eagles Nest and bringing forward the playground. I think the scope of the playground, we went through a lot of debate on how, how big that project should be. But there was no question that we had to replace the playground in order to maintain a safe environment. So I put, I, I put that safe, that pad in the safety bucket and not necessarily in kind of project enhancements. But that's just my way of looking at it. So I, I would, I would ask that you try to look at it that way.
Thank you. Jake, Erica had her hand up, and I'm going to go in order to see if we have time to get to the second. Erica, you have a question?
Yeah, just a quick question for Kathy, actually. I just wanted to ask you, based on your experience with other projects, is a timeline that we are contemplating enough to avoid supply chain issues? I mean, I'm in favor of accepting the recommendation of our subcommittee that we should move forward with this. And so my, my question for you is, are we going to be able to do it next summer?
Yeah. It, it's a good question, and we've been seeing the supply chain issues all along, which is part of the reason why we recommended that, that the school not rush and do it this year. I know that was kind of their initial goal, and we basically told them, no, it's too late, you'll, you'll never, it won't happen. Which is why we said, let's get geared up and have you in the best position you can be at early next year to have your bid numbers in hand and be first in line. We are seeing more and more and more turf fields being done in these projects and the turf companies just are flat out basically trying to meet the demand. And the best way to do that is get your projects out there early in the season, so you're first in line and the materials are there.
So does that mean our timeline make, make sense to you? You think that's appropriate if we do it? But okay, great. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure.
Yep, you're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, does anyone else from school committee other than Jake, before we start around to have a question about the infill, infill recommendation? No? Okay, Jake, I'm going to invite you to share your question, and then I'm going to invite, because this is an unusual circumstance where community members weren't able to have their meeting that they were planning to have. If anybody who's attending, who is not a member of the school committee, would like to offer brief input regarding this, especially where public comment was so long ago, then you may do so at my invitation. Is the, could we open the chat, Pam, for that? Thank you. Pam's going to open the chat, so if you would like to make a brief comment about this, then put your name and address in the chat, please. And Jake, what is your second question?
Not sure who this is directed to, perhaps Kathy, but we're talking about the shock pad as if it's a safety issue. It's, my understanding from the comments here is that it's not required. But if we, if we talk about it as a safety issue, we're implying that we are opening ourselves up to li, future liability if we don't do it. To what extent might that be the case? Or if we chose not to install it, do we somehow put ourselves at more risk?
It, it, it's a good question. I guess in regards to the shock pad versus the, the safety, your fields at, with just crumb rubber, which, you know, thousands of fields have been put in with just crumb rubber, I mean, it's been done for years. The alternative infills, which do require a shock pad, are absolutely required to have a shock pad if you go with an alternate infill. Those, the, the every, all the fields have to meet a certain G max, what they call that compression type testing requirements. And they also do a HIC, what they call a HIC test, which is a head impact. It's actually a test where you have the steel ball that's basically the size of a head, it's dropped at certain levels and, you know, has to meet certain criteria. I mean, the school is part of your maintenance with just crumb rubber, you're still required to meet those, those standards. And if you do that, would you, it's my understanding, you know, you have contracts with field turf to maintain your field and such, and I'm, and they're testing them. I know Gail has also tested the fields, you know, to, to sure that they make that criteria. So as far as opening yourself up to, you know, other concerns, if your fields are meeting the criteria, you know, based on the requirements set for turf field standards, you know, you're fine. The turf field, the shock pad with the crumb rubber, it, it's not required. What we're finding is that numerous communities, because of all the the news and such related with concussions and, and injuries along those lines, have decided to do it, you know, and they're basically selling it on the fact that it's an additional safety factor. It, it helps. Like I said, there are people who put in turf fields and they're not maintained quite as well. And then, you know, we've gone out and tested and find there's areas in the fields that aren't meeting the requirements. This just ensures that your field will always meet those requirements, whether it's maintained or not. And I have every confidence that Manchester Essex maintains their field. I know they contract out and whatever, but there are some schools, you know, they put them in and kind of forget about it, you know, and so it's more, it's like I said, it's more like an additional safety step. It's not required for the crumb rubber. And like I said, if the field is maintained properly per recommendations and meets the, you know, the turf standards, it, it should not be an issue.
Thank you. Seeing, so I see in, oh, Pam, did you just type in, what is the, the, the question perhaps that Lynn had? Yeah, Lynn Atkinson from Sixty-two Pine put in a couple of questions in the Q and A section, so I was just trying to move them to the chat so you could see them. I, I think they might have gone only to you. Because I can only access her, her question about is the turf field later.
So the two questions were, what are the current products in use at the middle high school field and coach field? The company and the product name, and then also what are the proposed products, company and product names?
The, well, the proposed, well, what's there now? I, I am not, it may be, Jason, you know who did the original turf.
Yeah, they're both field turf.
Field turf, okay. I should have, I shouldn't know. The, the, the current fields are both field turf fields with crumb rubber infill, no shock pad. Where, what's being proposed is a turf field that will meet our stringent criteria. We're not, because it's a public bid, we're not required, we're, we're not permitted to say it has to be a field turf, turf product, or there's other products like Shaw. What we do is we give a very strict specification in the bid documents that the, the contractor, the, the turf supplier has to meet. That makes them all on the same like playing field, levels them out, but also meets all the criteria that we have. The thing we can specify is the infill, that, which is going to be either the crumb rubber, what, you know, whatever gets the final vote for. And it sounds, you know, if we're leaning towards crumb rubber, that's what would be specified. And the shock pad, the same thing, we give strict specifications on what the shock pad criteria will have to, to meet. And then it would get submitted. There's a couple of different brands out there. There's Schmitz pads, there's Brock pads. You know, it'll be up to the, the contractor who bids the project to work with the turf people and the shock pad people to provide you, you know, with the most competitive price, obviously, for the materials. But also to meet our stringent specifications on all those various aspects of the turf.
Clarification is field turf is the name of the company, correct?
Correct. Correct.
All right, so seeing that as the only question, Lynn, thank you for, for doing that. We appreciate your input there. So looking at what we have before us, I will, I just want to make sure I have this in the right spot. I will entertain a motion to approve the subcommittee's recommendation to move forward with the use of crumb rubber infill for the field replacements. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
And I will, any discussion? Does anyone have any large feelings about not doing that, given that this is all we're talking about right now? Nope. Okay, then. Hearing no concern, I will go enroll call here. Anna?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Jake?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, carries unanimously. The second motion I will entertain is to include the shock pad as part of the proposal moving forward. Help me with motion language here, Pam. Is that, Avi, is that? That good? Sorry, go ahead, Avi. All right, what Pam just said, and move to include the recommendation of the shock pad. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Jake?
I'm, I'm going to be voting no against this, both for the budgetary issues with not having a sense of what the implications of that are. And if student safety is a real concern, I think we should have a broader conversation about which sports are high risk and/or practices within sports that are high risk.
Thank you. Anyone else have comment or something they'd like to share about that? I'm reserving mine.
I, I guess I, I would say that I, one, want to trust that the subcommittee work that's been done on this over an extended period of time has weighed some of those issues, and so I'm in favor of accepting that recommendation. Because you've had more time to dedicate this, to this than we have. And then secondly, on the safety point, I guess this is one of those areas, Jake, where I feel like the science is changing every day, right? What we know about head injury is changing every day. We're not going to get a black and white answer on this. But if we have an opportunity to make sure it's safer, and within that opportunity from a budget perspective, we also get, if I understood correctly, sixteen years of warranty rather than eight. I think there is both a financial benefit as well as a portion of safety that we should be taking into consideration, even though there's some unknowns there, because there will be those unknowns when it comes to traumatic brain injuries. We just don't know.
Thank you, Erica. Would anyone else like to make a comment?
Well, just a point of clarity on the cost part. Since Brook Street is joint between us and the town of Manchester, it actually wouldn't be the total cost there, right?
Pam's saying right, but she's on mute.
Yeah, okay.
Can I also get a point of clarification on the warranty? My understanding is the warranty on the shock pad is separate from the warranty on the field or infill?
That's correct.
So Jake's clarifying here that it's not, it's not extending the warranty on the entire field. It's just a longer warranty on that shock pad than the field, etc. Yep, okay.
Yeah, your standard turf, turf, like the carpet, the green, the grass, you know, that part has an eight-year warranty. They usually last ten to, to fourteen years if well-maintained. And then the shock pad, you know, goes, you know, two, two cycles. It'll have a sixteen, a warranty for sixteen years, but it could go longer.
Thank you.
Not to muddy the wa, can I ask a question, Tris? Because I want to check my thinking in case I misspoke and sent this in a, in the wrong direction. So if the shock pad is a sixteen-year warranty, if we had a shock pad with sixteen-year warranty in the situation we're in now, would the conversation and the heightened concern be around safety or would it be around the condition of the turf and how it, it's, it's shabby and it's not up to snuff and it's causing some tripping? I feel like we're caught in a safety question because of the, how long we've gone without replacement. And what I, if I'm understanding correctly, the underlying concern with the placement beyond the, the aesthetics of the field is that, that the concussion impact warning, which the shock pad would help us with. So I, I just want to make sure I'm, I'm not framing it in a safety discussion inappropriately.
You, just, just.
If we had, if we had a sixteen-year warranted shock pad right now, would we be in the same state of urgency for repair for fear of injury?
If you're, if you were at sixteen years, no, because the, the shock pad, like I said, the shock pad doesn't deteriorate until like later. The, the turf, it's the top surface that deteriorates, that, you know, through the sun and such, that, you know, it breaks down. The plastic gets brittle.
So we would fare better with those impact tests. Is that correct?
Correct.
Avi, go ahead.
I just, oh, sorry.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, that's, yeah, that is correct, because it would help us with the impact testing. We saw some areas of hardness with Gail report that was done prior to beginning the design process. And we did some remediation, so the pad would help us with that. But I think we also talked quite a bit about how part of the thing that we're dealing with now from a safety standpoint, and the other side of things relates to tripping hazard scenes, et cetera. And obviously, the shock pad would not help us with that. So I do think that we have to keep an eye as we consider what the timeline is for the next round, after we hopefully get through this round. Impact on the one hand, and I think the shock pad will definitely help us, as well as overall condition of, of the turf field related to anything else. And, and those are things that are very standard to be reviewed in any assessment that's done. So we can certainly get objective third-party data as we move through the life cycle of the next fields.
Thank you, Avi. So yeah, my comment is that I am in favor of including the shock pad for this, and I am especially cognizant of Jake's budgetary concern here. And I'm also kind of, I'm really in, in the camp of what Pam said about that's not going to be the make or break. Maybe it was Pam or Avi, but that, that's not going to be the make or break about this. We have a much bigger budgetary conversation about moving forward, about our long-term outlook for the budget and everything. This is a thing that needs to get done, and so I'm taking this in a silo on its own merit right now, knowing that the entire project has to be dealt with, the, the financing side of that as well. And so that being the case, I consider the, how the field has gotten pushed. It's had to necessarily get, been pushed forward. And I think that, that knowing, like Erica said, that the science changes every day, and I don't believe this to be anything out of, out of the ordinary or extraordinary. I think it's a reasonable measure to take in, including it in our design moving forward, and I am in favor for those reasons. Anyone else want to share a comment on this before we? And I am in favor for those reasons. Anyone else want to share a comment on this before we take a vote? Okay, so the vote before us is to approve the recommendation of the subcommittee to include the shock pad. I will go in roll call fashion. Uh, oh, I think we lost Anna. Okay.
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Jake?
No.
Kate?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So that's five yes, one no. The motion passes. And Kathy, you have your marching orders.
All right, we'll get it rolling.
Thank you very much for being here and for your time.
Oh, thank you all. Appreciate it.
Avi, thank you as always for everything you do, uh, on these, I mean, and making it clear. Thanks also, uh, Lynn, for your participation as well and for your attention to this. I, we all appreciate it. Um, that is, I'm sorry?
I ju- oh, I just said, no problem.
Thank you.
Kathy, thank you, Jason.
Yeah.
Have a good evening.
Thank you, guys.
Good night. Um, that's it for our continued business tonight. So we have school committee comment. So this is an opportunity to, uh, make a brief comment. If you would like, at this time, I will go in, actually, no, I don't think we need to go in roll call order. Does anyone have a school committee comment they would like to make at this time? Jake, Jake, you're the new Teresa.
I, I'd just like to put in a, um, a request that we spend a little time on the school committee calendar at some point. We've gotten several versions of it and we've never just had a chance to talk it through together.
Yep. And that's, uh, I believe we're actually going to discuss that at our nine-six meeting. Pam, did we talk about that? Yeah, we, we're putting that on the nine-six agenda. So thank you, definitely. Any other school committee comment for tonight?
Did I include the latest version of it in, in the notes?
In our packet, yes. Yep. All right, hearing no further school committee comment, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move, Harrison.
Is there a second?
Second read.
I will go by roll call vote. Chris?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Jake?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. We are adjourned at eight fourteen PM.